So, he's saying the pledge?
Yep, he's saying the pledge today.
(laughing) He's saying the pledge. Yeah. 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 He's saying the pledge. Yeah.[1120.00]
I got so much stuff. Is this for me? No. Good evening, I call the order of the meeting of the mayor and the board of trustees of the village of Burr Ridge for Monday, June 9th, 2025. Pam, why don't you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I absolutely agree, Mayor.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Thank you Pam for filling in for our seventh grader. Okay, trustee Snyder has his annual commitment to Ms. Recordier tonight and will not be in attendance with that. Roll call please.
Trustee Francis?
Here.
Trustee Skiafa?
Here.
Trustee Pavezza?
Here.
Trustee Mattel?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Mayor Grasso?
Here.
Takes us to item four, the consent agenda. An item shall be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any one trustee or anyone present at the meeting. Those items marked with an asterisk are considered to be on the consent agenda. A roll call shall be taken on the approval of the consent agenda and recorded in the minutes as an omnibus vote. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be discussed by the board, opened for public comment, and voted upon during this meeting. Five minutes. A, approval of regular board meeting of May 12, 2025. B, receive and file Economic Development Committee meeting of February 5, 2025. Seven, no, not seven. Seven, excuse me. Seven B, approval of a resolution approving a general release and settlement agreement. Eight, considerations B, approval to direct staff to prepare an ordinance approving special uses and variation, ZO 5, 2024, 340 Shore Drive, factor 75. C, approval of award of contract for consulting social work services to Northeast to Page Family and Youth Services in the not to exceed amount of $22,500. D, approval of award of contract for Phase 1 of the Pump Center Improvement Project to Crawford Murphy and Tilly, Inc. of Aurora, Illinois, for engineering services in the not to exceed amount of $91,600. E, approval of award for contract sealing to SKC Construction, Inc. of West Dundee, Illinois, in the not to exceed amount of $75,000. F, approval of award of contract to hydrant, sandblasting, and painting program to GO Painters, Inc. of Maywood, Illinois, in the not to exceed amount of $60,000. G, approval of vendor list dated May 26, 2025, for fiscal year 2025, in the amount of $174,782.87 for all funds, for a grand total of $174,782.87. H, approval of vendor list dated May 26, 2025, for fiscal year 2026, in the amount of $515,660.72 for all funds, plus $256,435.67 for payroll period ending May 10, 2025, for a grand total of $772,096.39. I, approval of vendor list dated June 9, 2025, for fiscal year 2025, in the amount of $30,760.58 for all funds, for a grand total of $30,760.58. And finally, item J, approval of vendor list dated June 9, 2025, for fiscal year 2026, in the amount of $108,964.87 for all funds, plus $238,141.64 for payroll period ending May 24, 2025, for a grand total of $334,106.51. With that, can I get a motion to approve the following items on the consent agenda? Five A and B, seven B, eight, B through J.
So moved. Second.
I have a movement, I have a second. Any questions at the board level? Any public questions or any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, roll call please.
Trustee Skiafa?
Yes.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Trustee Pavezza?
Yes.
Trustee Mattel?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Five zero.
Five zero, the motion passes. Takes us to six ordinances. Consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 22 entitled Business Licenses of the Burr Ridge Municipal Code Regarding Contractors and Subcontractors. Evan? Oh, sorry, Janine?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. This item on your agenda here was a fiscal year 25 goal of the Community Development Department to create a contractor licensing or registration program. Those terms are used interchangeably in the industry, just for reference, and contractor registration is commonly found throughout our area. Licensing contractors at the local level is a method of consumer protection for residents and for business owners. It also provides the village a venue to cite contractors instead of a resident for violations of regulations such as the Building Ordinance Construction Code of Conduct. If approved by the board tonight, contractor registration would go into effect August 1st, and to register, contractors would need to pay a fee. It's either $200 or $100. They would submit a certificate of liability insurance showing workers' compensation coverage, a bond, and any other license that they have from the state, so like for a plumber or electrician, copies of those licenses. Licenses would be valid one year from the date of issuance, so it would be a rolling annual for that specific contractor. There are no fees or bond requirements for exempt contractors under state regulations, so for example, a plumber or electrician. And I can take any questions that you might have. It is within Chapter 22 our business licensing regulations, for reference.
Yeah, this is something I think is long overdue for the village of Burr Ridge, and I'm glad that staff and Janine in particular brought this forward. It does fill a little bit of a hole in our procedures, and it also allows us to monitor the good contractors, which is a good thing, and more importantly, the not-so-good contractors. And if this passes tonight, we will be maintaining a list of the not-so-good contractors, so that we don't get repeat issues in the village. Any questions of any of the trustees? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. I was reviewing the listing of the contractors that would be required to obtain this license, and this is a typical listing, not all-inclusive, I understand that, and it appeared to be a listing of those most commonly used by our residences. So I would add to that list of fence contractors, because we have had a problem in the past with fence contractors. And do we differentiate between landscape contractors and lawn maintenance contractors? For example, a landscape contractor would put in, do a lawn renovation, and do all your flower beds, and rock outcroppings, and so forth, and mulch, and a lawn maintenance contractor, he cuts your grass once a week. So would we be requiring lawn maintenance contractors as well?
At this time, it was not our intent, because a building permit would not be required in order to cut grass or maintain a lawn.
Okay. All right. And what about roofing contractors? Are those licensed by the state as well?
They are correct. We actually do not require a permit here for a re-roof, so just a simple re-roof, as long as there's no structural changes to the roof. If there are structural changes, then a permit would be required for that, and they would have to be licensed through this, but they are exempt, so we would pretty much be taking a copy of their state license.
So the trigger here is the permit application?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Janine?
Just to piggyback on trustee Francis's point, what about people who do hardscape? Would they be like landscape contractors? Like, they do patios and all that? That requires a permit, right?
Correct, yes. So for a, we'll use a landscaping company that may do your flower beds, but may also do some hardscaping such as patios. Patios would require a permit, so they would have to be licensed.
Yes, Russ.
So my first thoughts on this is I, it is very difficult to find good contractors. They are in high demand, and I did do a survey, so I just, I do have a concern, is this possibly going to limit contractors for wanting to do business here in the village with our residents? Because this could be potentially a little overreaching.
I would say no. Contractor registration is very, very common throughout this area, and we actually, on a daily basis, receive phone calls from contractors who are looking to update their registration or their licensing, and they're frankly surprised that we don't have this program in place already. So it's pretty common practice for them, standard practice, I should say, for them, just with whoever they're doing business with. So I would say this is not onerous or burdensome to them, it's pretty, pretty standard practice.
And the other side of that could be, Russ, that they use the marketing ability to say we are registered?
Right, absolutely.
You know, and licensed in Burr Ridge. And, you know, we do sell a brand here, we, you know, we do call this a very special place for a very good reason. So that's the flip side of that. Some of these contractors want to say that they are licensed by the village of Burr Ridge, by the village of blah, blah, blah.
Correct, and just to build on that, Mayor, so we do frequently get questions from individuals saying if we could recommend a contractor, which we cannot do, however, we would be able to provide them a report of all of the landscape contractors, fence contractors, who are currently licensed with the village of Burr Ridge. So we would be able to provide that service to our residents, no?
And that's also a good reason why they should stay in our good graces, because if they fall off that list, that may not be such a good thing.
Correct.
Any other questions from any of the trustees? Any questions from the public? Okay, with that, can I get a motion to direct staff to prepare?
Just approve.
Just approve? That's all I need? Okay, all we need then is to approve amending Chapter 22 entitled Business Licenses of the Village of Burr Ridge Municipal Code Regarding Contractors and Subcontractors.
So moved.
We have a movement and a second. Any further questions or comments at the board level? Any, I'm sorry, yes, Russ.
So this motion would include the comments that I made about adding fence contractors, landscape, maintenance, landscape contractors and roofing contractors?
It would.
Yes, in the text of the ordinance. Thank you.
Again, any other questions?
So, so Mike, and then people who are doing like additions and all, what category would that be?
That would be an addition, it's a residential permit.
Okay.
And it could even go down as far as if you were replacing the electrical in your kitchen, that's an alteration. So if you hired an electrician, wouldn't be taking their money, but because they're exempt, but they would be requiring them to provide a license, or a copy of their license from the state.
Typically, like a general contractor is what they'll call them?
Correct.
Because they'll do different types of trades.
Okay. Any further questions? Any questions of the public? Roll call please.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Trustee Pavezza?
Yes.
Trustee Mattel?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Skiafa?
Yes.
Five zero, the motion passes.
It takes us to item seven, resolutions. Consideration of a resolution recognizing the distinguished 41-year career of Public Works Operations Supervisor John D. Wernemont. I have a resolution here to read right after we hear from David.
Thanks, Mayor. It's an honor, and it's a sad time, but a joyous time for a lot of us in Public Works as we come to reflect on just the few remaining days we have with John. There are many of us here, but there are hundreds more that are not, who have been blessed to work with him over his 41 years. He has taught us so much, and it's not just about the growth and development and build-out of the village, or about the nuances of the still original HVAC system in this building, or about the Unimog, or the Dresser, or the Toolcat, or the Low Pro that John used to plow with, or about the hidden secrets of storm sewers, like the railroad tanker car that serves as a culvert. He's really taught us how to listen, how to serve, and how to provide for our residents and businesses of the village. John knows thousands of residents by name, and they know to call him first when they have an issue, because they know that over those 41 years, he has taken so much time and attention to listen to them, to resolve their problems, and to work with them, and he really is one of those employees for which we would call, that he embodies the slogan of this very, a very special place. So with that, I'd like to start with the resolution, Mayor, and I'll let you finish. Whereas John Wernemont has provided exceptional service to the village of Burr Ridge since June 11, 1984, and will on June 13, 2025 retire from the Operations Division of the Public Works Department, having provided said service with commitment, compassion, thoroughness, dedication, and integrity. And whereas John Wernemont has provided outstanding support and service to the residents and businesses, having begun his career as a general utility worker, including being one of the original employees of this department of Public Works. And whereas John Wernemont continued serving with distinction, setting the example for service excellence in our department upon his promotion to supervisor of the Operations Division in 2012, providing knowledgeable management and oversight of village buildings, the Public Works fleet, village streets, and the ditches, drains, and detention basins throughout. Whereas John Wernemont has dutifully, safely, and promptly responded countless times after hours and on weekends and holidays, for emergency calls, urgent maintenance needs, and dangerous flooding conditions, to expeditiously satisfy our community's highest expectations. Whereas John Wernemont is widely known by village residents and staff for his gregarious disposition, perseverance, politeness, and assuring presence and radiant smile. And whereas John Wernemont is also known for his wholehearted participation in demonstrations of village equipment. Over decades of community events such as the former Harvester Days, Willie personally and passionately contributed to area parades and especially his church with his tractor and bus rides. And whereas John Wernemont has witnessed a community triple in population from 3,900 in 1984 to 11,200 today, worked out of three Public Works buildings, served under five mayors, six village administrators, and four directors of Public Works. And whereas John Wernemont And whereas John Wernemont, by virtue of his 41 years of employment with the village of Burr Ridge, retires as the longest-tenured employee in the history of the village of Burr Ridge, serving with pride, honor, and distinction to Burr Ridge residents, businesses, mayors, trustees, and employees, all of whom are urged to recognize John Wernemont's exemplary career and contributions, as well as a legendary legacy of honorable public service to the village of Burr Ridge.
Can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now therefore be resolved by the mayor and Board of Trustees of the village of Burr Ridge, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois, that John Wernemont shall hold a place of high esteem in the minds and hearts of the residents, businesses, and employees of the village, and is offered our sincere gratitude, congratulations, and best wishes on the occasion of his retirement at 41 remarkable years of service, adopted this ninth day of June 2025 by a vote of the Board of Trustees of the village of Burr Ridge. Congratulations. Well, thank you, Mayor Gressel. The village Burr Ridge trustees, village clerk, Sue Shatz, and Evan Walter, our village manager. Thank you, thank you all, for your kindness and allowing for this time. It's hard, you know, because where do all the years go, right, John?
I'm overwhelmed with gratitude, to say the least. Thank you all very much. It's, I'm just so thankful to work at the village of Burr Ridge for all these years. And it, in working at a place that you really, really, truly love, and I said it last year at my 40th year anniversary, this is like my second home, and it really, truly is, and it always will be, everybody. And it's, but when you can work at a place all these years and truly enjoy, you know, all that, all that really we worked at together as a team, it just truly, truly makes a huge difference. And just working certainly with all the great people, many of the great people through the years that I had the wonderful privilege of working with and being, you know, a part of, of the team. I just really thank you, thank you all so much. It's been a long time, it's been a long 41 years. And it just, in a way, it seems like, you know, like a blink of an eye. You know, I remember starting and part-time in 82. And it's just amazing, five bucks an hour. I started in 82 at five bucks an hour. And at the end of the year, the boss back then, Howard Heil, said, "I will give you a 50 cent raise if you stay." It's like, "I'll take it," you know? But, you know, it, it just was very, very humbling beginnings. And, and I want to, I want to now just give thanks to certain individuals that really made an impact through the years. Starting, you know, certainly with Evan, thank you. I worked under many, many, you know, what, four, I think, village managers? And you definitely, you know, were the very best, I felt, to work for and work with. So, so easy to work, to go to, you always, your door was open. It was just, so I thank you for that. And for you and Pam working out everything and putting things together, thank you so very much. You know, you've been so kind, so good through the years. And Dave, our current Director of Public Works, you've just been so wonderful. I, we're always so glad to have you come back. I remember Jim Lucas and I, he was a former Water Department Supervisor, you might recall, and we were both so happy to see you come back. And just your leadership, your kindness, your door was always open as well. And you did, you just brought such a nice culture to our department back again. So thank you so much. You're a great boss, you're great. We certainly appreciate it. And TJ, it was so nice working for you, working with you for the short time that we had. I wish it could have been more, I just wish it could have been longer. But we have the perfect guy in that position, our new deputy director. So thank you for everything you've done, and you've really come a long way with connecting with the guys. I think, and I know, our department is, got such a bright future and advancing so much further down the road. And where I leave off now, it's, rest assured, we have a really great team assembled. So I just, I'm so grateful for that and the expectations ahead. And then the Director of Public Works previous, before Dave Pressick, was Paul May, you might recall. He was the one that actually hired me for the Operations Supervisor position. I appreciate him, I thank, thankful for his encouragement to make that next step up. And he was there for me with that as well. And then, as I mentioned before, Howard Heil, he goes way back into the 70s, 80s, and the 90s. I think he retired in the early 2000s somewhere. He was the one that actually hired me for the part-time position, and then in 84 for the full-time. He was the one responsible, or the one that was in charge of it. But he, I appreciate Howard, he, you know, got me going and started in the right direction. But I also want to mention one gentleman that is no longer with us, Kevin Felder. He, he was the lead worker back in 82 when I was part-time. And he just kind of put me under his wings and kind of showed me the ropes, showed me the town. Of course, the town back then was a lot smaller. We didn't have fallen waters, we didn't have enclave, we didn't have a lot of these newer, you know, they're not so new anymore, some visions, but we had our hands full. And he was really, really helpful in guiding the way for me. And showed me how, he showed me firsthand on how to politely and, you know, appropriately handle and deal with the residents on their complaints. And I think I, hopefully I picked up a little bit off that, and I wanted to share that with the new guys coming in. So, you know, so he was a big, big part of that back then. So I just, I'm so thankful for that and all that he was. And, you know, to me and my life back then, I was just a young guy, you know, practically fresh out of high school. So, and then Shirley, you know, she goes back, she was our patrol lady back in the 80s. 424, right, on the radio. And we had so many people I wanted to thank, there's so many. Mark Loftus, our deputy chief back then, you know, a few years ago, now chief, of course. Thank you, Mark, you were great to work with. We know that there was a few things that came up over there at the police station. You were always great to work with, I appreciate it. And Chris, and Dave Allen, thank you guys. You know, I appreciate, you know, you know, taking the time and working with us and all that we did together. It was a team, it was a team. So, and, you know, like I said, Public Works, I think, has a very great future, everyone. And I think of Nick Just here with, you know, leader, supervisor of Forestry and Grounds. You know, we got a great future with Alex Metalikas in the Water Department. And, you know, and I, but I definitely want to say thank you to Rich here. Rich, you have been literally my right arm. I just want to, you know, thank you for everything you've done. Sorry, but for, you know, the time I've been away. And I just want to thank you, Rich. We've done a lot of projects together. Rich is my G2, my first guy in line. And he really, really did a great job leading the crews out there and together. We did a lot of projects. You have come up with so many great ideas in our projects. And I just want to thank you for your tentative and working safe and just doing what was needed out there to get the job done. And, you know, so I want to say publicly, you know, thank you. And, you know, keep, keep going, you know, keep doing well. So with that, last but not least, I want to say thank you to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who, without Him leading and guiding me, even when I stumbled, He'd get me right back up. And I praise God for His goodness and mercy as I come to trust Him and follow Him. And not perfectly, but I wanted to do it in God's way the best I could. And I just want to give Him all the glory and all the honor. So again, thank you, thank you, everyone, for taking the time for me for this. And this village is truly a special place. And I'm, I, I'll be back in different times, doing different things. So you won't get rid of me too soon. Thank you, everyone, and let's keep America great, okay?
And who are the two lovely ladies you brought?
This is my sister, Chris, and my other sister, Laura.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Been here longer than you, Al. Been here longer than you. Okay, that will take us to considerations, consideration of Village Hall Building. Turn it over to Evan.
All right, John, as your legacy building comes to form, we'll be talking about it. So don't take anything personally. All right. Well, thank you, Board. Just as a matter of business, I put this same slideshow in front of the trustees. If you guys want to page through or page around, stay off the slide that I have. It is in front of you, and this will all be on the website tomorrow for public conception and review. So we were waiting on a few figures late in the week and today, just to firm things up, to make sure we had specifics. So let's get into it. So this is a follow-up to our January discussion we had at the board level, maybe February, I forget the exact timing. But the board had asked for some additional information about the pricing and the capacity of certain things, the scope, as well as just sharpen our pencils on some other options that may be out there. And that's what this presentation is here to do tonight, is to do that. Just to get ahead of things, the direction tonight is to request, due to increasing impending maintenance and capital costs, staff is requesting direction then pursuing one or more options to provide the Village Hall to the organization and community. We've got three basic options before you tonight. There are some specifics on all of them, so we're not going to gloss over it at high level. I would ask that, as you watch me go through each of the three options, hold the questions just until the end of each option. There'll be times for questions at the end of them. We've got about 25 slides in front of you, so we'll walk through it as quickly and efficiently as we can, but I don't want to fly through. Just reminding everybody, this building that we're talking about was built in 1985 as a joint Village Hall and police station. It's about 17,000 square feet total, just to give you an idea of how crammed in we were. The police were operating at about 7,000 square feet on the south side of the building. They're in 19,000 square feet now, so they certainly needed the building, and they're taking great care of it. It's a two-story facility, the first floor that you see and are on most of the time as trustees. It's about 10,000 square feet, we've also got a 7,000 square foot basement. The entire site, including the Veterans Memorial, is about two and three-quarters acres. But of course, we can't sell the Veterans Memorial in any capacity, so think of it as a two-acre site. At this time, there are 15 employees, plus the mayor is 16, who have an office and work at Village Hall. Some work in the basement, some share offices, some work different hours than others. But in total, the count is 15, plus the mayor, so that's 16. I'm not expecting that to increase significantly in the future. And by significantly increase, I mean like doubling or going up by 50%. We might add an employee here and there in the future. That's not under consideration at this time, but I think that 16 number is pretty close to what we'll need over the long term. Finally, in front of you right now is the boardroom. It's a 35-person boardroom capacity, and that'll be an important yardstick we have going forward. And the 35 person, I mean seats in the audience. I don't mean the dais, I don't mean the lobby, I mean we can fit, on a normal day, about 35 people in the audience. So, option one, and this is really what we're talking about, is what does it take to fix the current building? I think that's the simplest option before you in terms of, you know, the amount of moving pieces. But it's really the foundation of this discussion, which is why other options exist. And so the goal is simply to extend the life of the building. Extending the life of the building would mean that, under capital asset rule, a new building, which is what this budget would get you, would be another 40 years. So that building would be 80 years old at the end of its useful life at that point. We're suggesting that the following investments are necessary in the next three to five years. And the reason why we're suggesting three to five years is to not suggest that everything has to be done tomorrow. Three to five years is to say, some things have already broken, some things are breaking, and some things are definitely going to break in the near future. And so we don't need to do this all at once. If this were the board's direction, we could stage it in a way that made sense, both financially and impact on the residents and our employees. But these are the investments we need over the next three to five years to guarantee another 40 years of life in the building. We've got it separated into five specific categories. The first is trades, second's renovations, third is public space, fourth is envelope, and the fifth is site work. I'll review these subtotals in greater detail in a moment, but there are five specific sub areas we're talking about. The total is about $1 million less, 1.1 million dollars less than our original budget, and that's due to reduction in scope and getting creative about how work gets done. We feel pretty good about these specific numbers. There's maybe a little bit of room on some of the items here, just in terms of aesthetic or scope, but really, a lot of these costs are fairly fixed. So we've been able to sharpen our pencil and bring the cost down about 20%. And we'll walk through exactly what we mean by that. So the first of these is the trades. The first goal of the trade is to modernize our HVAC systems. These are in disaster shape. These are original to the building. We did a study of this building about 20 years ago when we were looking at doing the police station or Village Hall, and even then, they said, "Our HVAC is pretty shot. Please replace these as soon as you can." It never happened, we're here today, they're still working. We don't really know how, but they are still working. The big one here, the majority of this dollar, is to replace the four original air handling units. These are usually called AHUs, when you talk about specs. These were all designed by a company called AMSCO Engineering in Downers Grove. They do mechanical engineering of these types of things, so these were all embedded by a third party. The air handling units, because the building is so large and has so many quadrants, it circulates the air through the building. It pushes through from the original outside source throughout the building, and it handles air as your primary air conditioning system. That's the thing you're hearing in the background right now, is the AHUs pushing things through. The other issue that we've got with the HVAC is that because it's an original pneumatic system, and John has, if you were here, I'd tell him, he's turned the pneumatic tube 10 million times. Dave's laughing because he's seen it. So pneumatic essentially means that there's either heat on or heat off, or cold on, cold off. And so if you've ever sat in this building and thought, "Boy, it's either way too hot or way too cold," it's because we can only give you cold or hot. That's it, those are the two options. We can get creative, we can open windows, we can have fans, but really, it's not that scientific, unfortunately. And so because of that, we need to install a direct digital temperature control system to actually allow... to actually allow us to have more precise air flow throughout the building. Secondarily, we need to install a variable air volume system. And what that basically means is, these are things that close and open throughout the building, which allow for efficiency of your air handling units. So what these things do, because you have a direct digital temp system, pair with a VAV, a variable air volume system, it means that if you have a window, that system can detect if it's open or closed. And so if we had the windows open in here, it might say, hey, we don't need to blow as hot or as cold or as much, and thus it makes it extremely efficient throughout the building. These things are necessary because the pneumatic system really doesn't have any servicing life anymore. We couldn't even buy parts for it if we wanted to. So if it went out, there really would not be a choice other than to do this exact system. Finally, there's a gas fire that's called a DX unit, direct expansion unit. This is on the roof. This is something that helps take heat out of the building, and it creates humidity throughout the building. If you don't have good humidity in the building, people fall ill, for lack of a better word. And this direct expansion unit helps to do that. We don't have a whole building humidifier, but we do have this expansion unit, which helps act as that type of thing. So these four components together are included in the system where we modernize the HVAC systems of the building. The second trade goal is to replace the electric and the plumbing systems. Again, we've got one project, which is the majority of the dollars here, and that is to relocate and replace the building fire alarm and suppression piping systems. So two steps here. The first is that our suppression piping head, our unit, is in the basement on an exterior wall. That exterior wall freezes pretty routinely, and thus our suppression heads freezes in turn. So a few months out of the year, it's iffy on whether it's going to thaw and work properly just because of where it's at, so we need to relocate that away from the exterior wall. Secondarily, but no less important, is that we have developed some pinhole leaks and rusting within the piping. So if the suppression system were to come on, we think it'll work, but at the same time, there are some rusted pinhole leaks without the system, which will affect pressure when the water comes on. So we need to conduct some repiping of the building. Second item here is an electrical system and lighting with all, an LED system. So there are certain elements of our electrical system which are different than others, but really, we've got a significant number of old halide-type bulbs in this building, where we really can't buy them anymore. I don't even really know where we get them, probably from like a COVID supplier or something. Who knows? John's here, we'll ask him the last week he's been here. But we need to upgrade our lighting system. You can see them up here, we've got them up here, we've got them in the boardroom. This one doesn't work because we really can't install electric for it anymore, it's all outmoded. So that's that. Finally, we need to relocate some electrical wiring. Some of it is on the exterior of the wall, and that's part of it. We've also got some old wiring, which really isn't working anymore. We've been kind of just duct taping it, for lack of a better word, and we need to replace that as well. Next item, replacing hot and chilled water piping. This is just what it sounds when you turn the hot on and the cold on. Some of that piping is just, it's galvanized, it's old, it's rusty, it doesn't work as well as it should, there's some leaks here and there. We need to do a job of upgrading those things to PVC. We've got a 600 amp distribution panel that's in the basement. It's the original distribution panel. It's pretty overloaded. The building was built really without computers in mind, but now everything's on computers and servers and the like. We need to go to at least an 800 panel, maybe even 1,000 panel, but minimally, that's, distribution panel needs replacement. Finally, our domestic water service systems and backflow, no different than what you have in your home or your business. Not too expensive, but they are just rusting, and we need to do some work on those types of things. Smaller cost, but still important to do. First floor renovation. This is one where really, maybe we could have some of these things be in the envelope or the site or the trades, but really, what this is, the goal is to centralize all the work and storage needs on the first floor in appropriate conditions and spaces. And the reason why this is on here is because we actually had a larger number on here due to the basement. And the reason why we have this on here is because by doing this type of renovation, we can actually save $500,000 by abandoning the basement. So again, by abandoning the basement. So what we're talking about here is, we have a number of things that are critical to the building, server rooms, IT racks, storage, offices, et cetera, that are on the basement that need to come up to the first floor. What that does will is allow us to delete from the scope and elevate our replacement. The elevator's right outside these doors, right by our main window. The elevator's original to the building, and we really don't make, there's really not parts for it anymore because it's an original rack-and-screw type elevator, which kind of works on a crank all the way down to the basement. Because we have access to the basement from an occupancy perspective, we have to maintain a certain amount of elevator access to the basement. If we were to replace the elevator, the elevator would require twice as large of a shaft with an ADA-accessible elevator to allow people in wheelchairs, as well as to allow a gurney to go downstairs. So by moving some of those objects upstairs, like offices, storage areas, some of our mechanical, some of our TIT, we don't need to do that. We also don't need to have a basement that works on the basement floor, because we don't have occupancy down there. So by adding about $200,000 in first floor renovation, we've been able to save about $500,000 in renovation costs in the basement. And that's really just by not using the basement anymore. The state has said we would just need to sign a letter saying that occupancy is not permitted in the basement, and that would be how that would work. Some of the things that would go into here includes installing a digital access and video security system. If any of the trustees have ever tried to use a door other than the front door, you'll see there's a push lock. That's great, that's not too expensive, but we also don't have any digital access inside the building. We also don't have any video in the building either. And if that's critical, which I think it is, we don't have that right now. There's also a rotted break area window wall with window wall that we want to replace with a standard wall, so that's that break room that's through the doors back there. It's, it looks like a greenhouse, for lack of a better word. It's basically rotting off the wall because this is where all the water pools. There's just a low point in the water, and that's just not a structural thing that we want to do anymore. We could always replace it with another wall, but it would be simpler and cheaper to do it with a standard wall with windows. We have some existing subfloor and foundation issues. If you've been in our public bathroom out here, you see the floor disappearing, it's sinking. We have that issue in the conference room, we have that issue throughout the building in the office side. We need to fix all the subfloor and the foundation, and pretty much all the flooring in the building needs to go. The only flooring in the building that's not original is really peel-and-stick carpet tiles, which are just coming up. They've been down for about 20 years. These are just some things that need to happen over time. And finally, we have some public furniture that's really no good anymore. If you've seen the conference room seating and you're unlucky enough to get that last chair where you sit real low, those things just need to be replaced with modern standard. But really, what this does is it attempts to recreate what occurs on two floors right now with one floor. We would end up with the appropriate number of offices to meet those employees we have right now. We have storage, we have bathrooms that meet our needs, as well as security and other things that allow us to do what we need to do every day. Public space, the goal here is to renovate the lobby and the boardroom. You know, renovate boardrooms carrying a lot of water there, so I'll talk about that. So the first thing we need to do is replace the front counter with an ADA sitting service area, adding a sliding security window that they have at police. So right now, if someone comes in in a wheelchair, we really can't see them because the window's above their head when they're at the wheelchair. We also have a significant number of residents who come to the building and want to sit. Again, we can't see them, we can't work with them very effectively, so we need to have something that better fits our needs. The window's got to come out anyway. The foundation window is in, is not really in great shape, it's pretty rotted. We're also asking for a sliding security window that you've got at the police department just for staff safety. The public bathrooms out here need to be renovated to ADA standard, they're original. The only boardroom topics that we're going to touch on are the AV and the optimization of acoustics. So this system here is pretty lousy, we want to replace that. There's some acoustic issues that we always kind of hear. I know I've gotten complaints about the acoustics in here, it can be hard to hear the presenter sometimes. Those things would all be optimized and fixed in this reno. And then finally, if you've been in the lobby after hours, which it will be in a little bit, you know how dark it can get. Really, it relies on natural lighting. We want to add some lighting to make it more bright and welcoming year-round. A natural light's great in July when it's sunny at 11:00 AM, tough to do in January after about 4 o'clock. So it just looks real dark, dank, uninviting, and just want to add and replace some existing lighting there. Building envelope, just ensuring the structural integrity of all buildings, the big one here is that the garage roof is very, very bad. We need to replace everything, the roof, the underlayment, the siding, the soffits, a couple of the garage doors, not all of them, and then add some additional gutters. We think we may have lost some of the gutters in one of the tornadoes because it just sort of rolls off and lands at the foundation, so we need to add those back on. The big one here is the roof and the underlayment. It's pretty diabolical out there. We've got birds flying through windows and things like that, so it's kind of a bird sanctuary. And the main building, we need to replace an exterior door, it's got a lot of rusty original there, entrance frames and some windows. About half the windows in the buildings don't work. They let in drafts and, you know, not a thing we want to do. If we're going to spend money on the HVAC, we should keep it secure and not let drafts come in and out. And then finally, there's some masonry, tuck pointing, and coping improvements that need to occur across both buildings. Nothing crazy, just here and there. It adds up a little bit, but not too crazy. Then last but not least, site work. We've got some site and some parking lot lights, we need to upgrade them to all LED. Some of them have been lost over the years to rust, just, that's a big reason why we have pole losses in the area. We have winter, we have salt, things fail. If you go out in our parking lot right now, a lot of them are rusted through. They need to be LED because they're halide headlights. Finally, we've got a parking lot that's got a lot of cracks in it, we've got curbs and issues, we've got walkway issues, and then we've got some storm drains and some covers that need to be addressed as well. I also want to talk about what's not included in that budget, just so you guys understand the scope of the renovation and all the things we've got included. So the first thing is that there would be not, there would be no expansion of the boardroom in terms of the four walls that are around you. It's hard to expand this boardroom because we'd either have to lose the conference room, we'd have to go out and expand, it would look kind of odd. So we thought, let's not include anything like that in the current scope, just to be frugal as we can. But there'd be no expansion of the boardroom, there'd be no capacity increase, no change in layout, et cetera. What you see is what you get minus the... Second, there'd be no expansion of the sides of the public lobby or public conference room. Not the end of the world, in our opinion. These are sized probably appropriately, but there you go. We wouldn't be replacing any of the landscaping that's been ruined over the years. We've lost trees through disease, through storms, through other things. We wouldn't be replacing any of that. There's nothing doing on at the Veterans Memorial, other than the parking lot that goes up to it. And we haven't really scoped out items that need replacing beyond five years, including things like the chiller and the roof. Those things are set to expire in 2035. Like all buildings, they need work along the way, but we did not include those in the five years. The five years is really something there to say. At some point, we need to cut it off and have a today budget versus tomorrow, we'll worry about it then budget. Again, the whole budget's 4.9. Option one, financing. We've got three items here that we can talk about to use. So your total budget, cash available, $6.5 million. So one thing you'll note is, you can afford all three of these options without borrowing. Mayor likes to say we're at that free community, that's appropriate and accurate. None of these would require borrowing, unless you want to. That's always an option, but you could pay cash for any of these options. So because we've been able to reduce the scope of this by over $1 million, we feel good that you can afford this option. I do want to pause at that point and just answer questions about option one. I'll move on to options two and three when I answer your questions.
Go ahead, Russ.
What's stored in the garage outside?
The garage right now is really just storage. It's, we have a couple of impound vehicles out there that were used in commission of crimes. Not a lot. I would, I would say we just don't store anything valuable out there, frankly, but it's in pretty rough shape, so it's either fix it or not.
Thanks. Thank you.
So if we were to do this whole thing, how long would this building last? Are we giving it another 40 years?
I think you can give it another 40. I don't, I don't want to say you'd only get 15. So the capital asset policy says you should get 40 years out of a building, and I think this amount of thing, I can't guarantee anything. I mean, we could develop a foundation issue in year 62, so I don't hold any to that. But I've, based on the discussions we've had with our consultants and our experts, we feel very good that this will give you the second gen of the Village Hall as you know it. Again, there's going to be stuff after that five years, but yeah, I think 40, another, I think this would be an 80-year-old building when it all goes right, when it's all said and done.
And then when there is construction happening, then there would be, I mean, like, for example, if there's construction happening here, what would be the alternate place for meeting?
There wouldn't be too much in the building, in this room. The only thing we'd be doing is, we'd be taking down that screen, we'd be doing a bunch of other things in here to do it. But we could probably schedule that. If we're only meeting monthly, we could probably work around that. As far as the actual building, we can probably move things until we get to a certain point. We could use the basement while we're renovating elements of the first floor. We're not renovating the entire first floor, just what we need to make things happen. So mostly, the south side of the building will get the renovation, and then the public lobby. But I don't think there'll be any, we'll call it, material impacts where like the whole building had to go offline. For example, if we had the public lobby reno and we didn't have that front counter, we do have another window over here we could use for a month, or whatever it ended up being. So I don't think there's any material need to move out level type improvements that are being proposed here.
So at the end of spending 6.5 million, would we have a state of...
4.9.
Sorry?
4.9. This is just the budget. This is just what you have available.
Okay. So at the end of spending 4.9, would we have a state-of-the-art building, or would we still have a okay building?
Frankly, that's probably a policy question. I would say it depends on what's priority for you. I would say maybe table that question until you've seen options two and three. I just, I'm not a board member, so I can't answer what your definition or whoever's definition of a state-of-the-art building. Everything will work well at that point, and you'll have no active, well, you'll have solved all your active maintenance needs at that point. There certainly will be more going forward you'll need to tackle, like the chiller and the roof when they come due, but the significant percentage of those things will be solved through some sort of three- to five-year plan. Other questions?
So when this building was built in 1985, do you recall how many employees occupied it at the time? A guesstimate, maybe? I know the police force was here, all staff was here.
I want to say we had about 30 total.
About 30?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Plus or minus one or two.
Of the 15 employees that this building or some future building would house, how many of those would be working full-time, or how many would be working at their desk in the office as opposed to working from home?
It was 10.
No. We've moved a few back into the office full-time since then, so I'm going to say 12.
12. 12 out of 15.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Smith asked about the garage. How many, what's the capacity of the police training room?
In terms of seating, 50? 50 chiefs?
Okay. Okay. Thank you for this detailed, for this cross-breakdown. I've been asking for this for a while now, and I have a better understanding of what needs to be done now to this building. So thank you for that. I have no further questions. Thanks.
Anyone else seeing on?
All right. I'm going to introduce you to option two. This is a new option we're providing the board. Short and sweet, it's an expansion of the police department. We collaborated with the police department itself to understand how this could work. And the theory behind this is because we've heard a lot of residents contact us and say, you know, the municipal campus is an important element to preserve, if it were not possible to keep this building, what could be done to preserve that? And so we're presenting this option as an idea to do that, in the event you said no to option one. So really, what this would require is about a 7,000-ish square foot hard construction addition and some interior renovations. I'll discuss with site plan here in a minute here. But there'd also be a stormwater component to this where we vault the parking lot over the pond that we've got in front of the police department. There's certainly going to be some external consultant costs in terms of an architect, civil engineers, et cetera, that we're going to have to pay for. And then there's FF and E because the space is, is not quite there yet. There's also a contingency component. We're, we're doing a not-to-exceed price of $6.85 million. This is candidly the one I think I have the least amount of handle on, just because it's probably the newest one we've looked at. We wanted to sharpen the pencil on. But I think the price will be lower if this is something the board wanted us to look at. Let me walk through this. So this is an aerial going from left to right, police department, Veterans Memorial, parking lot, village hall. And here is a basic rendering of how it would lay out. So you can see the square about in the middle of the building right there. That is the front door of the building that you right now walk into. That would be remaining. The lobby that you walk into would remain, but we'd have a wing that would be built onto this. That's the admin slash boardroom slash training room wing. The police department, aside from a Sally Port expansion to help with storage and loss of the garage, would essentially remain the same. There'd be a couple of small renovations that we'd do just to optimize. But all in all, the police department would be the same in terms of layout. How parking would occur, again, is we'd have a underground storage detention that's vaulted over a parking lot. And again, this is just using the land we own. We'd add about 10 total parking spaces doing this if you counted the police department and the village hall. We'd also add a access off of County Line Road that would give us more direct access into the building. I'm going to zoom in on this in a minute, but this is the overall layout that we would propose in general of this expansion. That dark red line that's like an L, that's the current exterior wall of the police department, just to give you some scope of what we're talking about. As you can see, the training room would be essentially renovated to become a conference room, a public window for the administration side of things, which is to say everything in village hall, and a workroom, which is really like our copy room, things like that. The training room would then move to the south side of the property. And we would build a joint board training room with about 110-seat total capacity in the building. So right now, we have 50 seats that are capacited for training room. We'd expand that by about double in the current iteration of this. If you also want to look, we also have on the left side here, all the offices that the current employees are using. We have two bubble offices here that we're using for storage and collab, but really the people we have on hand with account are accounted for here. We don't have a lot of room for growth over here. Just going to move in a little bit closer just for some extra detail. So we've got, these black lines here are access controls so the public couldn't come back to our offices. You can see here, we've got a dais which would include staff seating at the dais. So just think of an extended staff side on each side. So people like Director Farrell, Chief Loftus, Director Pricey and myself would sit there. There'd be enough room for 10 at this dais. So, you know, the planning commission, things like that could sit up there. And then again, we'd have room for about 108 seats in the training room, all pretty well spaced. If you look at this black and white notch line right here, this is an expandable glass wall. So if we needed even more space, we could open that up and have this, the room go into the hall. So we could get it up to about 130 total seats if we needed to. That's rare, but we wanted to make sure that that space for training and board purposes was as flexible as possible and give us the most flexibility of a new space. Again, the PD window would be maintained. The current records area is a little too big for our needs, so we would add some storage in the building, which is always nice to have. And then PD and VH records would continue to operate at that window. So if you have a question for police or if you want to pay a ticket, that can go to that window. That's staff 24, not 24, during business hours. And then if you have an issue for, say, permitting or water billing, that would be on the admin side of the lobby. But again, this would maintain a training room that's about twice the size of the current training room. It would allow us to have different functions for the village in there. We could have the Burridge Gala in there. We could have all-hands meetings. We could have much larger trainings that the police just can't accommodate right now with their current capacity. We've become something of a regional player and that sort of thing. I feel like there's always somebody in there using it, but now we can get even more types of training if we had a larger boardroom. So again, just a composite here. This is a second option. This actually is an option that we wanted to put together just for show, which would include the closure of 77th Street. And this would allow for the Veterans Memorial to come over toward the police department. This was put together by an architect. We appreciate it. This is just a composite idea that this could occur. We're not suggesting it has to occur. The cost of closing the road and doing a lot of this is about an additional 200 grand. We do not have that an additional 6.85. But again, if we're going to have one building next to the Veterans Memorial, we wanted to at least demonstrate this theory that could be put forward. Option two financing, about $8.5 million. So the difference here is that you've got the village hall sale in hand. We have a new appraisal of $1.8 million. There is a lot of interest on the site, so we're conservatively saying you'll get $2 million for it. But based on the location and the calls we've gotten, I think you'll exceed that number. We're being conservative in our budget. This is the same budget as option one, except we're adding the $2 million to the village hall sale that we would be giving up by getting out of this building. So it's slightly cheaper. Again, I think that 6.85 is probably a little high because we haven't gone through very specifically on getting bids and specific things. So I think it's probably closer to 6.5 than 6.8. And so if that were closer to 6.5, it would be cheaper on net to build this new addition versus the current building. The other benefit is operationally, we'd be moving from three buildings to two buildings in terms of maintenance. The board has talked about, or you've heard about how we have an HVAC budget in the general fund this year. We could use that to help optimize this project and go farther. So there's some efficiencies of scale in doing this. I think this one's just the newest option. I'd say this is when we don't have our pencil as sharp on as one and three, but I think it'll be sharper in our favor in terms of budget and scope going forward. That's all for option two. Questions, please? Not all at once. There'll be opportunities at the end. We'll go to option three. This is one you've heard before. This is the standalone new building. This one really has not changed too much from option, from, from January, but I do want to continue to offer it. How we're going to, for, how we're going to propose this, or at least theorize to think about it, is think of it just as a building. Think of it as site agnostic. This is a build-to-suit concept designed to be built on a half-an-acre lot or larger. So what we're basically saying is if you wanted to build a building, we've designed a building that can fit on a half-an acre plot of land, not counting parking, et cetera. And that could go anywhere in the village. We're going to walk through a few options. But this is an all-in price of $7.5 million. That's inclusive of hard, soft in site. Hard is walls, roofs, et cetera. Soft is engineering, architects, consultants, et cetera. And site is grading, parking lots, things like that. So it's inclusive of everything except land acquisition. So you'd have to build in the land acquisition. And I'll walk through what that looks like in a minute as well. And what we've done is we've partnered with another company called Holiday Construction. Mike's here tonight, he wants to talk about it. How this would work is we've gotten the price down because a developer would deliver a specified building for a fixed price with a day-one purchase. We're not in charge of managing the construction. We're not in charge of the price outlay upfront. And the developer would be responsible for any cost overruns. So when we say 7.5, it will not be 7.50001. That dollar goes to the developer because they couldn't manage the cost. So this one has the most price certainty. It is the most expensive, but this allows us to pay for everything in one, one shot versus managing it ourselves. This is about a 21-month development timeline. Again, the original budget was 10.5. We've gotten it down to 7.5. So as you can see, we've sharpened our pencils on all three options. Let's walk through some options here. This is an oldie but a goodie, the Village Center Outlet. Sorry, distracted by the noise. This is the half-acre outlet that the Village Center is offering to us. Employees would park in the decks. Building visitors would have access to newly created dedicated spaces along Bridewell. There's enough area there to create about eight new spaces that the public could use if they wanted to. The landlord is requiring as term of sale, 25 off-site parking spaces to commit to his sale. And that could be Harris Bank, that could be something else, but it would be off of the Village Center properties. So that's a condition we'll have to overcome at some point. The village would also assume maintenance of the parking lot around the building. So that area kind of south of Starbucks, west of Lens Crafters and the Tesla Chargers, we'd be responsible for just the hard maintenance. So if there was a pothole, that's ours to maintain. And the theory there is because we'd have to build a parking lot anyway, we'd become responsible for that. That helps the landlord out and the village because we're paying less CAM. There would be a small amount of CAM, probably under $20,000 of CAM, but that's the things we'd be doing anyway, like snow plowing, picking up trash around our building. So someone would have to do that. Now we're sort of outsourcing those things to the Village Center. The stormwater is included. We wouldn't need to build any stormwater here, but the price of the land itself is a million dollars. This is an offered price. This is not a negotiated final price. This is an offered price. Just trying to give you a ballpark of what it would cost to do this type of option. This is a very basic layout. As you can see, we've got those colors in there. Got the boardroom slash training room on the right. It's about the same size. I think it's 98 or 100, 100 seats instead of 108. It does that have that expandable wall to go into the lobby there that's just light blue. And then everything is on the left side of the building. But as you can see, there's bump outs for parking. We'd have minor traffic reconfigurations in here, but overall, aside from the loss of that lot, everything else would remain the same. The Clintock Drive, this is a, a new option we're providing the board. This is a two-and-a-half acre lot with an additional lot extending into the lake. It's actually like a four-and-a-half acre lot, but two of it's underwater, so can't use it. This includes some shared parking with the office to the south, which is MIDC, a doctor in town, creating ample parking. We'd have access through a shared driveway as visible in the aerial. This is offered at $1.6 million. So it's larger, a little more room to use, but it's, it's expensive. This is a very sample layout. It's just easier to fit it on the east side of the property. Again, we've got some, some shared parking though. The doctor has said that, you know, about half the day, their lot is full. So we would need to build some parking there to, to accommodate that flow, but not as much as we might need to in a normal situation. You can see a kind of a, a see-through of the boardroom right there extending into the lobby. About the same capacity, but this is the same building as you saw here. Just flipped around with a different configuration on this side. Because we'd be moving away from the municipal campus, we're just playing around with Armed Forces Memorial type stuff. Can we recreate that in the aggregate somewhere else? Again, we would never sell the Veterans Memorial. I can't, I can't believe I would ever get that direction from the board. So we're, we're not even proposing that. But again, the village has taken a lot of pride in proposing those types of things. We're at least acknowledging where those things could go. This is an extremely tongue-in-cheek budget, frankly. The two options I showed you were in the business district. And so we're including business district money as part of that budget. It's about a $9 million option at most compared to what I've shown you. There's $11.2 million of present capacity budget if you include business district funds in the village hall sale. There's also $15 million in future revenue from the business district, giving you theoretically $26 million. However, I do want to be very clear. Staff is not proposing we spend $26 million on a building. Not what we're after here. We're just trying to be clear in what the capacity is in terms of budget and available dollars. I do want to make one thing clear. You obviously could build this on the village hall site. You could tear this down and rebuild, but that building is $7.5 million. And I have $6.5 million for work on the current parcel. So if that were the board's direction, I'd have to get more creative, go back and find more money or figure out an alternative way to make it smaller, et cetera, whatever. But we'd have to overcome that fear. But you do have the option of raising this building down to the ground, rebuilding from scratch if you wanted. Not a recommendation, just reminding the board that that's an option. We didn't show that land, just want to be clear. I just want to quickly close out. This was a helpful suggestion by staff just to put in here. What are we talking about in terms of scope? The square footage is really what is the impact of the renovatable or buildable area. So option one, it's 10,000 square feet. We're going to be touching certain areas more than others if we renovated, but 10,000's the number for the first floor. We could talk about an office count that we would have in final, the board capacity, the garage capacity, the construction value and the land, and the land price. That's only there for comparison, just to summarize it all. At that point, I'll take questions about option three. Again, we really haven't changed too much in terms of layout or land opportunities. But the, the thing we really got into was the, working with the developer to get the price certain and down. That's all I have for option three, and I'll take any questions about anything at this point.
Go ahead, Guy.
For options two and options, for options two and three, what do you anticipate the service life of those buildings, those additions to be?
Options two and three, sort of the addition and the.
Addition and the new standalone building. I assume they would have the same service life, correct?
So I'm, I'm using 40 years because that's what our capital asset policy says. I'm using 40 years because that's what our capital asset policy says. However, you know, the police department, other than its HVAC, is mint condition. Like you, we had an inspector go through and aside from HVAC, there's really no issues with it. There's paint, but I would say 40 is a bare minimum on two or three. Number one, I would say you can get 40. Just by the end of that 40, it, it really could be an 80-year-old building.
And the police department now is currently 20 years old, correct?
15.
Pardon me?
15.
2010.
2010.
2010, thank you.
Anybody else? Yep. Tony?
Have we considered potentially buying a parcel from the TCF land? So that we could be.
No.
Closer to Burridge Parkway instead of being tucked back on the Clintock or?
Right. We, we could look at that to see if they would sell us a parcel. I don't know what the footprint of, after a half acre, how much.
And that's why we wanted to propose it as, just look at it as a standalone building.
Right.
Just a fixed number of land. We, there are pieces of land available in downtown, outside of downtown, that for whatever reason don't make as much sense. So like, we looked at the land north of Marriott on Bridewell and Burridge Parkway.
Yeah.
You know, that, that land is available for 800 grand, but it's pretty far away in the downtown and it's next to the highway. And we didn't have that as, as interesting a site as the other two we proposed. So if the board says, I like three a lot, come back with five options for land, we could. That's part of the direction we want tonight is are, are any of these options cross-offable or focusable? Though decisions are final.
Right. I'll throw one other option that, again, we were just looking at this. Go, go to option two. So if you look at this and take out the parking, trying to eliminate the parking on the, on County Line and look, what would that be? West? West? There might potentially be some land over here that we could purchase. We could at least look at that. We understand the land might be for sale, right?
Yeah. So you're looking, it's, it's Cardinal West here. So follow that, that sidewalk back into that neighborhood back there. There, a land, piece of land that could be for sale. So that parking, we were going to spend 800 grand almost on stormwater vaulting and parking. Could we buy that and prove that and have parking in the rear? So right up, right up here.
Follow what I'm saying?
Right up here.
Yeah. So you eliminate the idea that you have all this parking between the building and County Line Road, which aesthetically isn't the greatest look.
No.
Right?
So you would build on that?
So you wouldn't build on that at all. You'd leave it right now the way it is and you'd hope to use 800,000-ish dollars to buy the land to the west.
Do what with it?
And put the parking there.
Instead of having the parking right on County Line Road, have it in the rear of the building.
And then, well, the other idea ahead was if you go to the next slide, if that's, if we put the parking there, why don't we put that standalone building on County Line Road?
Right.
What standalone building?
The seven-and-a-half million dollar building.
Right on County Line Road.
Right on County Line Road. Instead of adding to the police department, just put a standalone building on County Line Road and put the parking in between.
Do it with the retention. Can you build above that retention? I'm not sure.
I don't, I don't know.
I don't think.
I don't know. I think one of the, I think one of the concerns that we would have is just making sure we had a parking. You know, if we have a 100-person capacity boardroom but only had 50 spots, is that appropriate? This current layout actually gives you 10 more spaces that are currently present at this building and, and police. So it matches the parking capacity. You know, all police employees can park in the rear and over here at this point under this plan. So we could look at anything. There's no bad ideas.
You know, that's a, I know we looked at that years ago as, as an alternative. I can't remember what the negatives were about. And I, I know it's the retention pond.
I think if I remember correctly, it was just five pounds of building on three acres of, on, on three pounds of acreage. Just was a lot. This is about 7,000 square feet of new. The new building's almost 10. Just again, we have to duplicate everything at the new building. So that's why the addition was brought in, is to say we're sharing a lunchroom.
Yeah.
Sharing HVAC, sharing parking, sharing everything at this point. But again, we're happy to look at anything. This is a direction, direction meeting.
Sharing walls.
Sharing walls, yep. Sharing servers.
And you, I mean, to go further with Tony's point, if you could engineer it so you could have a standalone building towards County Line Road, maybe the option is also to try to buy that property so you have more parking towards the back. And again, we, not to, you know, it's taxpayer money, but we, we do have a lot of cash or ability to finance without borrowing. We could still borrow money if we had to. There isn't a municipality around that hasn't.
No debt.
Right. We're, so we're in a very good situation. We could look at what that would look like, keeping the, a separate building on that piece of land, what the stormwater and detention problems would be. And also explore buying the land to the west. That could be, that could be an alternative. Yeah. That could be something.
We own that land.
We own that land already. There's no question about that.
Well, just looking at the perusal here of what we have, my indication would be, that would be my first one, to put a standalone building on the property next door with the police station. That would be my, again, of course, money's going to be a factor. And then this would be a second rehab in this. I don't like the third part of Village Center somewhere way off from the police department. So I, I do, in fact, I talked to Evan this morning about a, a building on that property, a standalone building. Instead of, and he told me that he, he's got an idea for a hookup with the police department. But I'd, I'd like to see if we can develop a standalone building in, on that property.
Yeah. I think, I don't, I think everybody would. Yeah. I think everybody would. It's just comments. Yes, go ahead.
So back to option two, where is the stormwater management planned as you have it drawn here now?
And how would we store the water? So...
You're building the parking lot on your current pond.
Yeah. So this dotted line here represents underground stormwater detentions. If we vaulted...
Pardon me?
We would vault it. Just put concrete vaults underneath the parking lot, and the water will continue to be stored underneath the parking lot.
Underground.
Yeah, underground.
Thank you.
And so there would probably have to be some version of that if we had a standalone building.
100%.
Right. So...
Pretend you got more weight than just the parking. You're going to have to figure out if you need case signs or something, so.
Yeah. It's case signs is what you would put on it.
Well, it's worth, I know when we looked at it, I don't know, after we opened the police department, we looked at it, and there were some real engineering challenges.
Yeah. I think we've looked at, again, this is probably the newest option, but I think we've looked at the idea of just, is there a way to work with permeable surfaces to help decrease that load? So it's just more of a standard foundation under a... The pond is only that big because we, I think, inexpensively and frugally made the stormwater system work over there. But, you know, the great thing about the standalone building is it's not that big. We could probably figure that out. But again, this is a first blush.
Yeah. It's not a big building.
No. And that's, that's why we, that's why we wanted to present it as, this building could go anywhere you want.
Right. Right.
So if you, go ahead, Mike. You go first. You go first.
Can you do detention here?
All right. Yeah. So I was, I was looking at this green area, too. What, can you put a...
So the green area is really this right here?
Yeah.
And the answer is, really because of the way the topo works, this is the best place for it to go. We could certainly have things in here that help compensate it. But, you know, really just for the amount of, this thing's going to be basically concrete, so it's going to need as much stormwater as you can get. It already has what it has considering it, about a third of the property's not concreted.
Well, my thought was if the building started in the parking lot...
Like thereish?
Yes. And then went east. So that, in other words, so that we didn't have to put entire building on top of the stormwater. I mean, that, just look at where you put it.
So I think I'm hearing, at least to this minute, I'm hearing that the board is interested in learning more about standalone building.
On the campus.
This property that's not connected to the police department.
Or connected. I do see some positives with it being part of the building. Think about HVAC. We already have budgeted $650,000 to fix the HVAC at the police department. You'd have one HVAC system. You'd probably have shared electrical.
Yep.
You could have shared services.
Yeah. I think that's, I think that's a big advantage is going from three buildings to two buildings. That's one less roof. It is one less everything. It's one less building for us to go to. That's a principal reason why we brought this forward is just to cram it down.
If we take the idea of connecting it to the police department, and since we do have some flexibility with financing, why can't we get architecturally creative so that you had a real vision that you could see, a wow factor thing, thing is a great word, a Y-factor look as you're coming down County Line? I mean, that this is the village hall of Burrage, and the police department's part of it. But we change the facade so it really is the village hall with the police department connected to it. And some signage, of course, that it's also a police department, but changes the orientation of the view to the village hall.
So I think I'm hearing direction that really, there's less support to build a standalone building, call it in downtown Burrage, but there is support to explore the idea of having a standalone building, something like this, but also continue to refine an attached option. Those are the two I'm hearing about the most right now, just in terms of refining direction for staff. But...
And I, I'm publicly, I've already stated it, but I'd like you to look west and see what the potential of getting that land is.
We just wanted to kind of have a, have a warm hug from the board before we ask residents to their property.
Right. Yes.
So I'm in favor of option two, that, in addition to the current police building, for all the reasons that trustee Smith said, plus the sharing of parking, the sharing of exterior walls, and of course, the sharing of the infrastructure. So I think that would be the most efficient, cost-effective option out there.
Yeah. And, you know, I mean, we'd live in 2025. We don't live in 1985. And being next to or part of a police department has certain advantages.
Absolutely.
I think you get my drift. So, yeah, I'd like to go all, not all in, but really look at this a little harder. We'd like to change the orientation so that it really does reflect a village hall more than a police department, understanding that we don't want to eclipse the police department itself. But it has to be primarily something that has a wow factor from County Line, that this is...
Would it be safe to say that, just, I think I'm divining here, you'd like this pump-out village hall to have a contrast to the current architecture of the police station? Or just, because the next step I want to do is I want to bring back just more renderings just to see it in 3D. You know, we, I think what we'd probably do is say, let's match it, but then we'll have a contrast just to help kind of give it some wow factor, to your point.
It, to me, it's a municipal campus. If you're going to do that, and you have, you know, you're looking at it, you're seeing the Veterans' Memorial over here, yes, the police department, but, and then the primary building is the village hall. I don't want to subsume and eliminate the police department. Obviously, it's very important for everybody to know where the police department is. But I'd like to see some rendering of how the village hall could dominate the site, maybe?
I think we'll play around with it. I think there's a, the great thing about the police department is it's a really great-looking building.
Yeah.
When you build it aesthetically nice like that, you have a lot of options. If it were a brutalist cement structure, there'd only be so much we could do with it. But because it's got a mix of everything, colors, textures, et cetera, I'm sure, I'm looking at Evan, and he's laughing at me, but he's like, yeah, yeah, I can do that. So I think we get the direction on that is just...
Right.
Bring this specific option out in terms of more detailed rendering depth, et cetera. But don't forget about the standalone concept, two and three, really.
Right.
Three located here is what I'm hearing.
And I do like the other entrance and exit right off of County Line again, further south. There was a real, it was a real reason why we couldn't bring the building closer to County Line. I mean, you know, I know we...
It's probably stormwater.
Yeah. I know we, when we looked at it and decided in '28 to build it and open it by 2010, there was a real reason why we couldn't get it closer to County Line Road. Now, maybe those issues have been...
Technology, maybe.
Yeah, maybe it solved it by now. But we didn't, we didn't put it back...
By choice.
By choice. We had to. Yes, Russ.
So before we get too far down the path on this one, for four years as a trustee, I do remember hearing that we have concerns with Public Works. And I understand we're losing the lease with the building next to Public Works. Should we be having that conversation as well about, is there a game plan for the Public Works building while we're discussing a new village hall? Just so it's front and center, because the last thing I would hate to do is go full force on a new village hall, and then two years later find out, oh, shoot, you should have been looking at Public Works for one reason or another. I just want to make sure that we're all kind of paying attention to all the things in the village.
So I'll just, objectively, the village hall is in worse mechanical shape by a lot than Public Works. Public Works always needs love. There, yes, we are vacating half the building, but that one, it does, just does not have the guts issues that this building has. It will at some point, as all buildings do, but that one just does not have the mechanical issues that this one does, where it could fail, and it could result in a seven-figure bill for us. But we do think about it. There is the proposal by Bridge before us that the planning commission hasn't heard in follow-up that does include a new building. Where that ends up is very much TBD, TBD. But no, we think about that building a lot. But this one is just more immediate in terms of what could fail, and the bills could run up quick here. So...
Okay. Thank you.
But it is on the radar.
Even the police department's on the radar. There's no, there's no piece of infrastructure or equipment we don't own that we don't at least think about. We're not that big. We can't keep our hands around it.
I think we should explore the lot next door and see if there's a possibility to bring it, because I like, you know, you have the Veterans' Memorial, the police department, and then the village center. But I really like being on County Line Road, because this is our, as you said, the municipal campus, and just consolidating that and consolidating our resources, and it makes it more efficient.
Understood.
Is that enough for tonight?
I feel like I have direction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, really. There is an advantage of discussing this as a group, and I'm sure we'll hear from some people in the village, too, on this. And, you know, all thoughts are welcome, of course. All right. This takes us to item nine, public comments. Is there any public comment on any issue? Doesn't have to be on the agenda. Is there any public comment? There's no public comment tonight. Anita, reports and communication. We started our concert.
Yes.
Yes.
Summer is officially here. People are out and about. The village is looking very beautiful with all the flowers, and we are all set to enjoy our new entertainment district. And the band this Thursday will be Horizon, which is a brass-infused funk soul band. So looking forward to seeing everyone there.
Good. And what's the weather like? You promise some good weather?
Yeah. I'll make some calls.
Okay. Yes, Russ?
So mayor, I'd like to give credit to two of our officers. So I was at the, enjoying some food a week ago Sunday on the, over at the village. And I saw one of our officers, Officer Omero Garduno and Officer Thomas McNabb, run with their portable defibrillators because a guest in one of the restaurants was having a cardiac issue. And it was just very impressive for me as a resident, sitting there and seeing the professionalism and response time by those two officers. Now, at the same time, one of our ambulance folks from the fire department got there as well at the same time, and I believe did apply the treatment. But from what I understand, the gentleman did survive. But I want to commend the police department and the great training, because you think about the police staff, you're thinking, okay, protect and serve. But, you know, here they are, meeting the needs of a potential resident or potential consumer in our village with medical assistance. And it was, it was great to see and very commendable for those two officers. So thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
The Armed Forces Day celebration in May was excellent, well-planned, and well-attended. A little bit of wind on that day, but it was, otherwise it was a great day to honor our active servicemen and women.
Anyone else? Nope. Just a couple of closing comments, then I'll follow up with what Guy just said. I thought, we have to find a way to make it a bigger deal, because it should be, should be celebrated more than it really is. Most people don't even know about Armed Forces Day, and that's a shame, because it is a, something. I, who, I pride myself on knowing American history and things about American history, but I really was fascinated by the speech of the gentleman who told us about the folding of the flag.
Yes.
And the 13 folds, 13 colonies, did not know. I did get a full explanation in writing, which I am going to get into a frameable poster and put it up somewhere. And I'll send a copy of all of it to each of you. It's fascinating. Each fold means something. And it has, it goes to our historical roots and to our military service roots. Very, very fascinating. It's something that should be taught in school. It should be taught in school. To me, that was, that was the jewel of the day. I know Russ would have been there but for the fact, and, you know, give him a little kudos, because I know he's in some pain tonight, because he was in a bit of an accident that was not his fault. And so he's, he's healing, and that's good. And once again, trustee Schneider would be here tonight, except he does his charity work with Misericordia, and today is that commitment. This evening is that commitment. And finally, Friday is Father's Day, and I want to wish all the fathers in the village and on staff and elsewhere to have a very happy Father's Day. Weather's supposed to be great. So with that, can I get a motion to adjourn to June 23rd for the next meeting, although it may not happen? But can I get a motion to adjourn to June 23rd at 6:30?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.